I've been gotten confirmation. So, welcome to the very first event organized by the Upper West Side's newest community organization, the Upper West Side Coalition of Block Associations and Community Groups. My name is Chris Giordano and I serve as the head of the West 64th through 67th Streets Block Association, and I'm president of this coalition. The Upper West Side Coalition was formed when a dozen block associations came together with the purpose of helping block associations form and thrive. We recognize that our community benefits from diverse and inclusive neighborhoods, and we are committed to creating an open and welcome environment for all members of the community. Thank you to all who joined this District Six Sydney Council candidate forum. The Democratic primary is being held on June 22nd with early voting starting on June 12th. It will include ranked choice voting, allowing voters to rank up to five candidates. Our format is simple. Candidates, please keep your answers to two minutes. You will have one minute for a closing statement. Let me now turn the form over to our two moderators who will introduce the candidates and get us started. Dee Reber is president of the West 75th Street Block Association, one of the founding groups of the coalition, and Steve Anderson leads the Theodore Roosevelt Park Neighborhood Association of West 81st Street, and is the inaugural chair of the Coalition's Board of Directors.
Thanks so much, everybody. It's good to have this first event. We're pleased that five of the candidates are able to join us. David Gold was not able to. I will introduce the candidates in alphabetical order for the first time, which is how we'll answer the first questions and then we'll mix it up a bit. But we are really thrilled to have you all here to kick off the work of our organization. Joining us is Gail Brewer, Maria Danzillo, Sarah Lind, Jeffrey Omura, and Zach Weiner. Thank you so much. And again, that is the order simply for the first question. My neighbor Dee Reber is going to take us through question number one. Dee, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Chris, and thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. So the first question is the zone of civic engagement. So we know that many of you have proposals, but what specific plans do you have for empowering and getting block associations involved in Upper West Side issues? And secondly, would you be supportive and open to the possibility of creating a community task force or some vehicle whereby block leaders and community leaders could get together with your office on a regular basis to help solve some of the problems? And let's start with Gail Brewer.
Thank you, thank you very much, and congratulations to everybody on forming this group. I think it's long in the coming. Some of us know that we've tried in the past, and you now are successful, so congratulations. So to answer your second portion first, it's an absolute yes. Task force to meet with the city council member absolutely on a regular basis. I can't think of a better group to meet with, so that's an easy yes. In terms of issues, I've been thinking about this. There are, just to be really specific, obviously there's the working with the groups that are doing the cleanup. There's all the issues of food that came about because of the pandemic, and there's a great volunteer efforts of helping the seniors and helping our neighbors that took place during this pandemic, and I hope that would continue. You know, you think that it might not still be an issue, but I bet it is. So that's just the norm. But the second thing is, we have a whole lot of vacant stores, and I am worried that they could remain vacant because we know that pre-pandemic, they did. So one issue would be to spend some time with the owners and trying to think creatively about, I call them mom and pop, sometimes people call them owner operated, sometimes people call them entrepreneurial. But I'm so nervous that we're going to end up with what I call the national chains if we don't take action. So that would be one place where I would love some help. One person can't do it alone, but on a place by place, you might be able to. And the way to go about it would also, I think, involve finding individuals who would like to be in those stores and working with the owners, that's one. And of course, the second one, just the other day, north of you, but in Board Nine, we were working, we got two big bellies to come in right next to the park in terms of the garbage. You know those rats went away overnight, overnight they went away. So trying to figure out how you can deal, not just with the sweeping and the cleanliness, which is important, but those, each big belly is actually $4,200, so it's not inexpensive. Figuring out how we can work with the city agencies, the city council, to be proactive about cleanliness, that includes graffiti, that includes the sweeping, that includes working with the sanitation department, and it includes organics. I'm really pissed that the mayor cut that, and I wanted to come back. So how, it's nice to talk about it, but how do you actually make it a reality? So that would be the sort of second of vacancies, the cleanliness. And then the third thing is, you have to make New York fun. So whether it's an open street, I'd love to see more of them, but you can't do open streets if there's no programming. 103rd Street is really going well. Amsterdam North is going well. I could go through the other open streets in the city. If there is a nonprofit or somebody working, it is a most exciting between children, restaurant, families, individuals. One guy is even doing podcasts, et cetera. But you have to have that kind of outreach. So I would say that would be the third thing is make New York City fun. People need to get together, but they don't exactly have to say, know how to do it. That goes with the arts. You could bring the arts in there, you could figure out how to get funding to individuals who need it to do with the arts under the Open Culture Program. So those would be my three suggestions that I hope are very specific.
Thank you. Maria?
Hi, thank you very much, Upper West Side Coalition. It's really nice to see you. I've been on some Zooms with a couple of you over the last few months, and I've been following Gail on these Zooms, and I often say I'm going in a different direction on my answer. So I'm a 40-year resident of the Upper West Side. I raised my three children here. I, my husband and I, we figured out that between the two of us, we probably lived in a total of seven or eight different apartments only on the Upper West Side since we, I got out of law school and he got out of law school as well. So we've, I think we've been on West 75th Street, we've been on 82nd Street, I've been on 87th, 89th, 97th, 97th and West End. We've lived in various parts of the Upper West Side over decades. And one thing that I can say, which differentiates me, is that I'm deeply, deeply committed to this neighborhood. I'm deeply committed to community voices. My slogan on my campaign is "I Hear You, Upper West Side", and my reason for stepping into this race is because our community, the people who asked me, many, many people in the community reached out to me and asked me if I was interested in stepping up and running for city council. They have not felt heard by our elected leaders and have not felt that the direction of the neighborhood is going, you know, in a place where we want it to, where we think it has potential to be. And so "I Hear You, Upper West Side" is really a way of saying, my campaign is about hearing the community, hearing the block associations, hearing the members of the community. I have more community donors than any other candidate in this race. Close to 90% of my donors are in district donors. These are people I have never, most of them are people I've never met before, people who stepped up and said, "We really want to go in a different direction." My campaign is moving fast. We have tremendous community support. A shout out to the viewing party that's going on this evening to watch this debate. So what I have said to people is that going to city council is not me alone. It's our community. It's everybody in our community. And I would absolutely welcome and ask you to please come with me, and let's work together, and let's bring our voices to city council. Let's together bring back our neighborhood, make it, you know, bring back all the wonderful things that we love about this neighborhood. We have wonderful parks, cultural institutions. We're coming out of this very difficult pandemic. Our small businesses are struggling, our arts institutions, our community gardens, all of these things that we need to address, and we need to do that together with a voice that makes it possible for everyone to be heard. Not appointed people, people who are on community boards that are appointed by elected leaders, but the actual people who live in the community, who have voices and need to be heard and want to be heard about the direction they want to go in. So my platform is Safe and Clean Streets. I've been extremely consistent with that from the beginning of this campaign. I haven't suddenly decided it's an important issue. It's something that I believed in from day one, and it was, it was a platform that came about as a result of listening to the community, of being out in the community and hearing the voices of so many people, and helping our struggling small businesses. They've really been drowning. They are not getting the help and services they need. Combating the mental illness crisis, this is a huge problem that has to be addressed, and making sure that our schools are welcoming schools for people in the neighborhood. We want our neighborhood to be the place people want to stay in and live in, not leave. And unfortunately, that's not the direction we're going in. So I would say if you like the direction New York and the Upper West Side has been going in in the last couple of years, then, you know, certainly we can reelect leaders who are playing musical chairs with their offices, or we can go in a different direction and elect leaders with new and fresh visions about the direction you want to go in. And one thing I can tell you for sure is that if I'm elected, we're going together. You have a seat at the table, and yes, absolutely, a task force would be fantastic. I would see the Upper West Side Coalition Block Association as an organization that we need to empower even more forcefully to make sure that the community needs are being met first, first and foremost. I'm a community person, and this is my neighborhood. I'm not going anywhere, so I'm here for you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Maria. Sarah?
Great, thank you so much. It's great to be here with you all. I know, you know, it's great that you've come together as one association because you've been so active on so many issues for so long. So thank you for this work you're doing. It's great to be here. I'm going to try to answer the question I think was asked, which was about civic engagement, I believe. So like Gail, I'll answer the second part first, which is absolutely would love to have regular meetings with you all with a task force of neighborhood organizations. I think it's so important that we are talking regularly with open communication about the issues that matter, so 100% on that. And then in terms of more broadly on the civic engagement point, you know, this is something that we've been working on at Community Board Seven for years. It's, it is hard to get people engaged and to get people to show up to meetings and to make sure that you're hearing from the various voices in the community and not just the people who show up, you know, every month, because some people can't show up always, you know, people with shift work, people with small kids. You know, sometimes it's just difficult for people to come to these meetings. So it's great when we have leaders like you all and the people who are on the community board to represent us, but I also think it's important to get out onto the streets and meet people where they are to hear, make sure we're hearing from everyone in the district, which is why I've proposed something called Citizens Assemblies, which are randomly selected, demographically representative groups of people brought together for a, you know, one-time setting to discuss certain issues. They have a professional facilitator, and they discuss, you know, for example, you might say they discuss whether we should build, you know, a new shelter in the neighborhood or not. You might get feedback from the community board, feedback from the block associations, and then you could also get feedback from this kind of citizens assembly, where you're hoping that it's a more demographically representative group of citizens who wouldn't always make the time to show up at meetings. So that's important to me to make sure that we're getting a real picture of what everyone in the district thinks. So I think that there's many ways we can reach out to people. There's other ways than just that. And definitely, your organization is another example of a great way to make sure we're hearing from people. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Sarah. And if I need to repeat the question at any time, just please let me know. All right, Jeffrey?
Hi, thank you so much for having us tonight, and also congratulations on bringing together this organization. It's so exciting to see the community come together. We need more of this, and that's what I'll be looking to do when I'm elected. As a labor leader, an elected officer of a union, I know that good policy will only get you so far. Your members really need to be behind you, and that's the same for a city council member. You need the community behind you, and they can only do that if you're conducting your office with transparency and accessibility. So those will be my two big priorities. I talked to a lot of people here in the neighborhood who either have trouble getting in touch with their member or, you know, they go by the office and nobody's there or not picking up the phone. I want to make sure that I'm holding regular office hours so that I can, so that anyone can get ahold of me anytime. I've begun that already by giving my email and my phone number out to everyone I'm meeting so that they, when they have questions about the campaign or about specific issues, they can get in touch with me directly. I'm talking to everyone. I think whoever wins this seat is going to have to prioritize bridging the divide and bringing this community back together. There's been a lot of heated rhetoric, but I've been saying this over and over, we're neighbors, we've got to keep talking and listening to each other. It's why I've set a goal to meet every small business owner in this district. It's why I'm sitting down with local police leaders. It's why I'm talking to the presidents of the NYCHA tenants associations. And when, when I win this seat, I'll be looking to have regular meetings with our community board members, our PTA associations, local community-based organizations that are already on the street doing the work, who know the needs of this community better than anyone, our business improvement districts, groups, and are, and of course, our block associations. So I'm going to be leaning on you. You're going to be sick of me. I'm going to be calling you all the time because you know what's going on in your block. And in order to represent the needs and interests of this community, I need to, I need to know what's going on. So, oh, one, one more thing. What's been so great about this pandemic is that a lot more people have been able to participate in the process because of the technology involved. As we move on beyond, beyond the pandemic, I'm hoping to bring that technology into the regular meetings that we have. So if, if for whatever reason you can't attend in person, there will always be that digital option for you so that everyone in the community can get involved. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeffrey. And last but not least, Zach?
Thank you, thank you so much for having me. This is great to be here. The block association and this new coalition is something that I've been really interested in and excited about since I got into the race about block associations. My whole candidacy has been about getting things done immediately and not waiting to get elected to take direct action and demonstrate the kind of programs I'm talking about and how they can work at a larger scale. Specifically, I want to focus on storefronts right now because this is something where not only will I need your help in the future, but I need your help right now and for a really, really fantastic event we have coming up this weekend. My program Startup Retail, which I've been talking about, it's a new initiative, which is a profit sharing agreement for vacant storefronts with landlords and entrepreneurs so they don't have to surmount the impossible hurdle a lot of times of a very high rent. Instead, it's a pop-up and they share revenues. We have this kid, Avoto Peters, 12 years old, he's from Brooklyn. He founded a thrift shop, clothing shop, when he was nine with his mother. He's like an American hero. He donates 20% of his profits to a soup kitchen that he runs. It's like, it's like ridiculous. He's an American hero. He's coming to the Upper West Side, May 21st through May 23rd. We're doing a big event. We're going to have music, we're going to have some ballet maybe, and we're going to have a lot of great clothes. And we'd love to have the block associations and try to help make it a success. It's on West 60th and get the community involved here because we think this is a great person to welcome into the neighborhood and a great first step to rejuvenating the storefronts. I think the storefronts Gail mentioned is a great place to start with the block associations. We, we have the power as a block to make these stores a success. A lot of the reasons why stores are going to survive post-pandemic with Amazon and everything is because the people in their neighborhood care about it. And that affects more than just the storefront and the blight and, and, you know, making the neighborhood a better, more, you know, enriched one. It also affects crime, it affects safety, it affects everything. It just changes the entire environment, and it's a great place for us all to work together. So definitely, if I'm elected, hopefully I'm elected, I'll be trying to work out a lot hand in glove with you. But just so you can see a little taste of that, this weekend, I really hope we can stay in touch and work on this together and make it a big success for Avoto. My goal is he does really well and then can have a longer lease. We're going to have a lot of press, we're already getting some coverage, and I really want to showcase, we talked about bridging the divide. This is, the Upper West Side is a state of mind. It's a fantastic place. People from all over America aspire to come to the Upper West Side and start a life here and feel like they made it when they get here. And we have just this incredible opportunity to come back and show it and show what we're about now that we're coming out of the pandemic, and this is something that we can directly influence together. So I look forward to working together this weekend and then into the future.
Thank you, Zach. Steve?
So I want to talk with you about the issue of sidewalks and streets. There's clearly been an increasing amount of activity on the sidewalks, the streets, and the curbs throughout the Upper West Side. So how do you see the opportunities and the challenges experienced by everyone? Restaurants, stores, bikers of all types, delivery trucks, cars, and then there's pedestrians too, who are a part of the streetscape. So what do you see as the opportunities and the challenges? Let's begin, please, with Jeffrey.
Sure, this is a huge one. I'm a big proponent of bike lanes. I think we are transitioning to a bicycle-friendly city, but we've got to prioritize safety, and that's safety for everyone. We started this transition without educating pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers what it means to live in a bicycle city. So we need an education campaign to get everyone on the same page, and then we need enforcement to make sure rules are being followed. But I want to expand bike lanes throughout the Upper West Side, especially on our cross streets, 72nd Street, 96th Street, so we can get safe passage between the East River Park and Riverside Park through Central Park. I love what's happened during this pandemic with all of our outside seating areas. I want to continue with that. We need more open restaurants, open streets, open culture. But we've got to make sure that they're working for the business owners and they're working for the arts institutions that can take advantage of these opportunities. The Open Culture Program, for instance, was, you know, the city chose some random streets in each neighborhood across the city without discussing with the arts institutions what their actual needs are. So I'm looking to retool that program to make sure it's actually meeting the needs of the community. But I look forward to many more open streets and, and, you know, redesigning this city, redesigning the neighborhood for, for this new century.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Zach, you're up next, please.
Um, yes, so this is definitely a big opportunity. All the pedestrian foot traffic gets back to my original point, which I'm going to be harping on a lot. Startup retail, we have 66 empty Broadway stores at 66 places that can thrive with all the pedestrians coming through. It's a unique opportunity for Broadway. So much space. The bikes are a menace, honestly. They're an incredible menace. They scare me all the time. I've seen accidents happen, I've seen near accidents. I'm very supportive, we want a greener city. I thought it's great that we finally allowed them and passed that rule in the community board that the bike delivery men can use the bathrooms. I thought that was a little bit of a shame that it took so long. Maybe that'll help, less of a rush when they can use the bathroom. We definitely need to take steps there. I think that's another great example of where the block associations can come in, and we could speak at a very local level and say, "We're having a lot of trouble on 82nd with bike traffic, and we want to address that and talk to the restaurants in that area, talk to what, you know, try to figure out the source of it and deal with it at a, at a block-by-block level and what exactly might be causing some of these pedestrian choke points." I think a lot of grand plans and big aspirations for some of these things don't really matter if we don't get the concrete change on the ground. And that's something that I'm really thrilled about with this coalition is that with a responsive and active, just block-by-block association, we can address it on a minute, you know, detailed basis. But the bikes are a menace, they're a big menace, and we got to address it. People feel, people feel endangered. I love the Open Culture Program, I love the walkways, those are good. But, but overall, we got to, we got to do something to make sure that, that they work a little better. I think they're getting more organized around the bathroom issue they were, so we could speak to them and be able to have more of a back and forth and a negotiation on that. But I see people walking here who are tourists, who are visiting, who came to see the Banksy, came to see the museum, a lot of people. These are people who would want to buy stuff in the neighborhood, and these are people who could support a business and make the neighborhood pretty and fun. And the Upper West Side I grew up in, you know, I've been here my whole life. I remember there are all these little bookstores, like "You've Got Mail", cliche, you know, and, and, and this is an opportunity to kind of get that back. So that's mainly what I see when I, when I, when I think about the pedestrians, but also taking some steps with the bike danger.
Thanks, Zach. Sarah, please, please respond.
Great, thank you. I love this question. Issues of pedestrian safety was actually the thing that prompted me to join the community board and set me on the path to where I am today. So it's really important to me, and I think that we can do so much with street design to make our streets safer. You know, I have two little kids, I also have my mother-in-law, who's 81, lives with us, and our streets should be safe for children, for our elderly, for those with disabilities, for all of us to walk down. So that's critical, and I think that's like a, you know, that's a core job of the council member is to manage the streets in the district. So as a member of the community board, I've been working on this issue for years. In terms of the curbside space, probably many of you remember the battle we went through to get a study on curbside space usage done. You know, there were a lot of mixed messages about what it was about, but from my perspective, our curbside space is an important public good, and we should be using it for the highest use. And that might include, for example, things like loading zones, so we don't have UPS and fresh direct trucks always double parked, which is, creates traffic, but also creates danger. You know, it might mean things like trash trails, so we don't have garbage bags piled up on our streets, or like we have now with the open dining, which has been so great during the pandemic. So I'm very excited about the possibilities for our curbside space and what we can do with that. And then in terms of pedestrians more generally, I encourage everyone to go to my website, saralind.nyc, and check out my Broadway plan. It's something that I worked on when I was chair of the Broadway Task Force with many people from the neighborhood, members of the community board, small business owners, commercial real estate brokers, landlords, artists, activists, all came together to talk about how we could best make use of Broadway in the district, how it could be a better place, a place where we can gather and enjoy and have a, you know, community there. So I put forth some ideas of pedestrianizing some areas of Broadway, dedicated bus lanes, more green space, seating, et cetera. So I'm very excited about that, would love to get feedback on it. I think there's a lot we can do with our streets to make them vibrant and thriving and support our small businesses, make this an arts district, drive foot traffic, and just make it a great place to live. Thanks.
Thanks, Sarah. Gail, please?
Well, thank you very much. This is a role that the block associations could really play. On the macro level, I have already called for what I would call a public realm czar because there are actually 25 agencies that work on this issue, and they do not coordinate. And the next mayor is going to have to make them, and the city council is going to have to pass legislation to make them. I mean, you already heard some. Just for the disabled alone, the curb ramps that you see on every curb, the accessible pedestrian signals, I think should be in many more places. I have friends who are blind, they need them. And of course, just something simple as where should the bike lanes be? Where should the bus lanes be? Where should the open restaurants, we love them, should be? Where should the open streets be? Even the things like the newspaper vendor, half the time, there's no newspaper in there. All of that, and where we should have new opportunity for pedestrians to gather benches, even the issue of benches for the seniors. I don't even get into the scaffolding or into the state liquor authority, which actually I would consider part of our streetscape discussion because all of that is what is happening right now. I too support the bicycles, they too need to be safe. So my basic platform is the local, whether it's the block associations working with the community board, should figure out what you want, but even plazas, you can't get any answer. I had a friend who wanted to do a street sale for clothing on a sidewalk near a park. Guess what? There's no agency in charge of that. So she finally gave up and just did it. Told the precinct, no information came forward, and she just, the precinct was fine, but there's no agency. So I'm saying on the macro level, we got to have agency coordination so you can do what you want to do seamlessly. But on the local level, you should be able to say to one public realm czar agency that this is what you'd like to do and have people from the different city agency help you, even outdoor cafes. That's going to be a different scenario probably post-pandemic. But what do we want? What does the community want? And then how that can be filtered into an office that can make it happen. So I'm really excited about the possibilities. I think we have changed the way in which we work on our streets, but I worry a little bit that if it's not coordinated, then we could have these restaurants, these retail, these block associations calling 10 different agencies to do what you want. So I would say that the bottom line is agency coordination, making sure that it's safe, make sure that it's got some new opportunities. I never forget about the disabled, and I want to make sure that we have some way in which always, I share that with Jeffrey and others, that the arts are part of any kind of discussion, even Arts on the Avenue, which is a wonderful new bid program with the Columbus Avenue bid. You took them forever just to get permission to do that. So that would be something that should be much more pro forma. So Department of Cultural Affairs would be one of the 25 agencies in the public realm czar. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Maria, you are up next, please, unmute.
So this is certainly a question filled with opportunities and challenges. Going out and campaigning every day, I think it's the one issue that comes up the most often, which is people's concerns about safety on the streets and concerns about bicycle lanes, concerns about ATVs wearing down Broadway, concerns about electric bikes on the sidewalks. concerns about electric bikes on the sidewalks, concerns about congestion pricing coming to Midtown Manhattan and how that's going to impact parking. I'm a car owner. I have three children, and they love to ride their bikes. I also enjoy biking, so I understand that this is a complicated issue with different groups and different voices. And again, going back to our campaign motto of "I hear you, Upper West Side", I've heard from people over and over again in the community that they haven't been heard about their concerns about street life and street safety and how we're all working together in one of the most congested neighborhoods in the country and how we manage our streets and has our current leadership executed plans for rolling out changes in how our streets are working in a way that's preserving pedestrian safety, that's ensuring safety for bicyclists, that's ensuring safety for dog walkers. Just the other night, I was leaving my apartment building. I came out the revolving door with my small dog, and we were on my sidewalk when my dog was almost run over by an electric bicycle that was delivering food. And it was really terrifying. I've learned that a very simple legislative change can be made, which would require bicycle delivery personnel who are working for third-party providers, not the restaurant, to simply be required to add identifying information on their safety vests. So this is the kind of simple, straightforward change that could improve safety significantly. I've had somebody, recently I was standing on the corner of Columbus Avenue and Eightieth First Street, and a bicycle rider coming down Columbus stopped me, saw me handing out leaflets and said, "I really want to talk to you about the fact the bike lanes themselves are not safe. They're not maintained. There are bicycle riders going at very high speeds. I don't feel safe as a bicycle rider." I've had people who live in the neighborhood who are car owners. Look, people who can afford to put their car in a garage, put their car in a garage. But our neighborhood has a lot of economic diversity, and there are many car owners who simply need their cars and cannot afford the cost of a garage. And they are concerned about how congestion pricing is going to impact the ability to park their cars in our neighborhood. And so I support the idea of a residential parking permit. I'd like to see us roll that out. Most important of all, I really would like us to focus on hearing everybody in the community, hearing their concerns. As Jeffrey pointed out before, unity is really important. Hearing the community, hearing what different interest groups have in mind for how we share our streets and accommodating all of those various interests. We have many seniors in our community, and I hear this over and over again. They're really afraid to go out at night and walk. They're concerned about their safety from all these different types of changes that have occurred over the last couple of years. Have we rolled them out well? Have we rolled them out successfully? I think we need to address all of those things, as well as curb usage. These are all important issues. But most important of all, I haven't seen that we've rolled out and executed in a way that was really responsive to all the different community needs. I've gone to every community board meeting in the last couple of years, especially the transportation board meetings. And I have not seen the kind of community engagement one would expect in a highly concentrated community like this, where we really must listen to the different voices in the community in a respectful and inclusive way. So that's something I've heard from many people everywhere around the neighborhood, on many block associations, many residents, this concern that their needs or their concerns about how streets are shared is not being heard. So that's something I, when elected, would make it a top priority.
Thank you, Maria. I just want to mention to all candidates that we will be able to get in many more issues, many of the critical issues, if brevity is our guide in the responses. Dee.
Okay. Well, a lot of you have touched on this tonight already, but the next topic is on crime on the Upper West Side. So there have been a lot of differing opinions and perceptions about where the Upper West Side is right now regarding crime. But we'd like to know whether you personally feel that the Upper West Side is increasingly dangerous? And how should public safety concerns be addressed? And we're going to start with Maria.
All right. So I have seen a change in the neighborhood in the last couple of years. I think it's even prior to the pandemic. There's been certainly a feeling of increased instability and a concern that our streets are not as safe. You know, statistically, there's been some confusion around how crime is reported with some, looking at the statistics, people in our community group have looked at statistics and have seen a different result than what, you know, in terms of how it's reported and how the numbers go. We know, so I don't want to get into a debate on data, but we do need to understand that data is not always reliable and that crime reporting statistics do not include many of the unreported events that happen, especially around hate crimes, people who are concerned about reporting things because of cultural differences, that sort of thing. I don't want to get into, I'm not going to, you know, have a battle over correct data versus not correct data. What I do want to say is that there is a feeling that the neighborhood is not as safe as it used to be. And in fact, there are many significant events that have happened in the last few months. A store on Amsterdam Avenue was robbed at eleven AM. A teenage girl was shoved into the back by a man who threatened to murder her. There have been stabbings on Eightieth First Street and Columbus Avenue in the park. There have been issues in Central Park, and then, of course, we have our subway issues. So we really do have issues that have to get addressed. In terms of how we address those issues, you know, I advocated for increased, I think, as a result of the pandemic, our police officers have not been walking around the neighborhood as much as they used to. And it would be nice to have greater community engagement with our local police. Our Twentieth and Twenty-Fourth and Central Park Precinct police officers are tremendous. They are committed community members who really care about us and our safety and are dedicated to making sure we're kept safe. So we need more engagement with our police officers in the community. We need to make sure that more police officers are engaged, are not doing administrative work, but are actually on the street. I support initiatives around policing and police accountability and improving that. That's something we all know we have to do, but we can't do that unless we have good relationships and communication with our police department. And we move away from, you know, anti-police rhetoric that's been so divisive and really work together with our community to make policing work better in our community. But bottom line here, yes, I do think, and I think this view is shared by literally almost every single person I've met in the last couple of weeks, safety is the number one issue on the Upper West Side right now. People don't feel safe, and I have been consistent in my platform from the very beginning that this is the number one duty of a public servant, is to keep people safe. If you can't step up and keep people safe and be willing to have the difficult conversations and look people in the eye and have those conversations, that is what a public servant is supposed to do. Last weekend, I went to an anti-gun rally. I marched with Harlem Women Save. I've been involved in anti-Asian hate crime issues. I've been involved in antisemitism. I'm really, really concerned about the increase in antisemitism, especially what's going on in the world right now. So these are issues that are really important to us and our community. We're a fragile community, and we need to be strong and stay together and have these important conversations, not shy away from them. Work with our police, work with our community members, and do everything to keep every single person in this community safe. And that includes people.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you. Zach.
There's no question that we're looking at a rise in certain types of crime. I speak to people from all over the neighborhood in all kinds of situations, people who are experiencing homelessness, people living in Natcha, people closer to where I live. And a lot of them are telling me they have never felt so unsafe. The reasons are myriad. The answers are, there are a lot of possible answers. But just to focus locally on this community and what we could do here right now, there's a lot of positive good that can be done to really move the needle and make things better for everyone and increase a feeling of safety and health in the neighborhood. One thing is the discretionary budget. The council person has a hundred and thirty grand a year in discretionary budget. That budget, I believe firmly, should be put first and foremost into community services, such as mental health, outreach, you know, drug support, everything that can prevent and crime from occurring and help people that are experiencing really difficult situations and leading to a deterioration in the situation in the street. You know, public quality of life became a very divisive term. When I spoke to Shams, the homeless hero, and some of his friends and people, they said, you know, "We want quality of life too." You know, none of us are looking to have terrible experiences, but we're not getting access to the services inside the hotels or outside. And it takes a daily thing. The people that I've spoken to over the course of this campaign who are experiencing homelessness, who I've seen do amazingly better and feel much better, and it's become much safer areas where they're spending their time, are getting daily and constant outreach from their friends and services. And if we have a lot more of that, that would help. In Natcha, we had a great program going with Patty Ryan, the head of the Tent Association, Officer Rodriguez, who was the cop there for fifteen years. They had a community meeting that they would do every two weeks to just have a liaison, have a conversation, make sure the community was working together, talking, it was very constructive. Unfortunately, that came apart during the course of events when there was a lot of, I think, ham-fisted attempts to reform without thinking about, you know, what are the specific needs of each specific neighborhood and where were things actually working and we could learn from? I think that if we can build, and this is another thing with the block coalition, as an idea and as an effort can be expanded in Natcha and other places, if we can get a really good line of communication between the police, the communities, and the services being provided, then we can address it on a micro scale. You know, there's big legal challenges ahead and big legislative challenges at a citywide level. That's one thing. But another more pertinent thing is what can we do right now with the discretionary budget? What can we do right now with our neighbors? And it's a lot. It's a lot. I mean, there's been shootings of volunteers in Natcha. There have been stabbings. There's been issues like that, and the cops say, what they say is it's a very small group of people ultimately that are responsible for violent crime. It's a very select few, and you're going to have a much tougher time if you're not having lines of communication within the community about who are the specific issues. Then, and then the vast majority of what people in the neighborhood are complaining about, which are more quality of life issues, public indecent exposure, public urination, things like that. Stuff that can be prevented by services. This became divisive, but I really think that Upper West Side, again, like I was saying with the stores, you know, this is a great place, and this is a place where we can showcase what's great about New York City. And we can show that if we all come together and are talking around this stuff and working with each other, and maybe it sounds a little hokey, but I genuinely do think that we can get a better policy, you know, initiated just on a block-by-block, on-the-ground level. And ultimately, that's what counts. You can pass any law you want. But if you're not interfacing with the different shareholders, it won't materialize. It won't change. So we can start, we can get a head start on what's going to pass in City Hall next year by doing that right now. So I've started a little bit of that, and I'm excited to be talking here and be speaking with you and look forward to more conversations and connecting with Patty Ryan and all of us and the head of the Tent Association. And I'm optimistic. I think we have good things ahead. So it'll be, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Gail.
Well, I too have great respect for the two-oh, the two-four, the Central Park Precinct, the head of transit and people in the precinct who are trying to do the best they can. There is either reality or perception, there is an increase in crime on the Upper West Side, and we do have to address it. So there are a couple of suggestions. And I do think this is where the black associations could play a big role, because it's not really a community board issue. One is, whether we have enough NCOs or not, I know in my block, they barely know who they are. So what is the role of the neighborhood coordination officer? And is that person participating in the way he or she should be? And I don't know the answer to that. I have, you know, the whole borough, so I am constantly dealing with this. Honestly, I spoke at the event that Maria mentioned the other day, so I'm constantly working in Uptown and Downtown with the shootings that are real, people are dying, and we're trying to deal with some of those and doing the prevention. But I would say that the NCO officers have to be a lot more involved. And if there are not enough of them, then we need to advocate for more. That's number one. The second is that we need to figure out, I know that was, Natcha was mentioned. I think that where there is a black association advocates on a block, where there are either scatter sites in Natchez or some of the buildings, there needs to be much more coordination between the two. That doesn't solve the crime problem. But it might have some understanding as to who's who. Because there is, I mean, it's not any of us, but there is also, I'm afraid, there's some kind of perception that crime is coming from Natchez. I don't think that's true, to be honest with you. But I'm letting you know, that's how people think. I'm endorsed by fourteen of the Natchez leaders on the West Side, and I've known them for, you know, many, many years. They work really hard with the PSA, which is the Housing Authority Police, and with the local precincts. But the real issue is people are coming from outside the neighborhood to be robbing the banks or to be robbing individuals or to be doing things that they should not be doing. That's where people are coming from, and the police tell us that. That's not for me. That's because they see opportunity here. So either it's the issue of the banks and the national stores having more security, so it's not such an opportune endeavor, or, and we've been pushing for that, we're going to do more, or it's continuing on this really challenging issue of mental health. When I was talking to the transit police today, because there are three more stabbings today in Manhattan on the trains, they are really not clear as to how to address that. And that's where the challenge is, of mental health. And I'm not saying that all by oneself, as a council member, you can solve it, but we have to do a lot more on the mental health. And then just finally, I would say on the anti-hate, that is something that individually, whether it's in the schools, the civic participation, and of course, what is going on in some mayor office. I don't really understand it, but the police have a wonderful task force. I have to have worked really hard, having press conferences and participating in every single anti-hate effort in the Asian community and obviously in any other community. There's a hate, obviously, with all the antisemitism. Sometimes what has worked is you bring the schools and the museum or the schools and synagogue together. That's been a really effective way of addressing some of these issues. These are complicated, but I think, I don't know what's going to happen with those who are homeless on the street. There's obviously the street outreach. There's individuals from the police department and mental health professionals are now working together. I don't know if that's going to work, but people need that kind of assistance. And I think sometimes it's not provided in the proper fashion. Complicated issue, those are just some suggestions, but I do think that the black associations can play a big role in having much more communication between the police department and residents of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Gail. Jeffrey.
You know, there have been a number of startling criminal incidents here in the neighborhood and across the city that I think have people on edge. And whether or not those are borne out in statistics, it is certainly the perception. I think it's important to acknowledge how people are feeling and also acknowledge that bank robberies are not acceptable. Subway slashings are not acceptable. Hate crimes are not acceptable, and we need to find ways to address them. You know, some of, so this begins with having good relationships with the police. I believe, yes, we need police accountability and oversight. We do that by sitting down with the police unions, having some tough negotiations and getting accountability and oversight into those contracts. I believe we need to empower civilian complaint review boards so that they can actually impose discipline. And I believe the police commissioner needs, we should require advice and consent of the city council in order to confirm the police commissioner. But we still need good relationships with the police. We need to know who they are. They need to know who we are, and they need to be on the street, present, visible, and responsive to the needs of this community. I live across the street from Lincoln Center, where I often see five police cars lined up outside. I don't think that's a great allocation of resources. I would much prefer them around the neighborhood, on their feet, walking around, getting to know the needs of this community, where they'll actually be able to make a difference, not in their cars in front of Lincoln Center. We've got to address unemployment. A lot of the crimes we've been experiencing, especially the startling rate of burglary on the Upper West Side, I believe that has to do with the pandemic, with economic crisis that we're in. So we've got to get people back to work. The last statistic I saw said that we're still at twelve percent unemployment in New York City. That, you know, of course, we're going to experience some sort of crimes related to that. We need to get kids back in school so that they, with after-school programs, so that they're occupied and not wandering around the street and getting into, you know, the kinds of mischief that I got into when I was a kid. We need, what, oh, one thing I hear regularly is that a lot of people just don't feel as safe walking down the street as they used to. And that's because we have so many vacant storefronts, and our streets are just darker and quieter than they used to be. Well, first, we need to get those storefronts back. That's a long-term goal. But right now, just light up the streets. Let's get some brighter streetlights. Let's light up those vacant storefronts so that people have that sense of security when they're walking through our neighborhood. I want to put a time limit on scaffolding so that, you know, scaffolding attracts not only rats and trash, but criminal activity. So let's take the scaffolding down. So, you know, our streets are open. There's. but criminal activity. So let's take the scaffolding down. So, you know, our streets are open. There's, so there's nowhere to hide. Um, we need to get people off the street. We have way too many people living on the street and we need permanent supportive housing with uh, comprehensive mental health and substance abuse services uh, to create stability and get people back on their feet because we're in a mental health crisis. It's affecting all of us. And we're experiencing that with these, with these really scary crimes that we're seeing across the city. Uh, finally, you know, a, as an Asian American, I, you know, I've, I, I've been pretty scared over the last year as, as I've been walking around the street and, and hearing about incident after incident. And I'm very lucky that nothing has happened to me yet. But it, you know, as, at the rate that they're at, it feels like it's just a matter of time. This is not an easy thing to solve, but I think there are some things that we can do to address it. Uh, State Senator John Liu has proposed uh, teaching Asian-American history in our schools. It's very easy to other someone when you don't realize that they've been here for over 150 years, that they have contributed to the fabric of this, of our country's history. Uh, we also need to make sure that all of our police officers are trained to identify hate crimes. So that when they show up onto uh, and onto a crime scene, they're asking the right questions and collecting the right information. We saw a year ago, uh, there were a number of anti-COVID hate crimes uh, that were, that were misclassified. Those are actually anti-Asian hate crimes, but they, they just weren't tallied correctly in the police statistics. Uh, so that's where, that's where we begin to address these issues.
Thank you. Sarah.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, I want to start by saying just very clearly, nobody wants crime in their neighborhood. I think we can all agree on that. Um, crime is not acceptable and, you know, we will do what we can to deal with it. Um, certainly, the idea that the neighborhood feels less safe is something that I do hear from many people. Um, I also hear from other people who don't feel that way or feel it's, you know, slightly less safe, but don't feel that it's an emergency situation. So I think the, the feeling is mixed on the Upper West Side. I also feel for myself personally that the more the city opens up, the safer I feel that on the street. You know, the more people are riding the subway, the safer it feels on the subway. The more people who are out and about when I'm walking home at night, the safer it feels walking home at night. So I think that some of this stuff is gonna just start to resolve itself as we open up and there's more eyes on the street. Um, you know, certainly, good relationships with the police are important. I've been for several years now a liaison to the 20th precinct through the Neighborhood Policing Program. I have great relationships with the officers there. I see them on the street and say hello. I, I, I think they're wonderful human beings and I'm glad to work with them. I talk with them regularly. Um, and, and just, I will say, you know, every one of them has worked in other precincts around the city and they love working here because it is such a safe neighborhood. And it's such, it's a neighborhood where people, you know, have great relationships with the precinct. So I think we should uh, be sure to count our blessings um, relative to some other areas in the city. Um, and, you know, Gail made the point, which is true, that sometimes the crime does come from other areas in the city. So I, I think we can't look at this uh, just in our neighborhood. We have to look at the city as a whole. And I believe we have to address the systems, not the symptoms. We know that the safest communities are those with the most resources. Those where people have healthcare, where people have housing, where there's excellent education, where people can get good jobs. That's the best way to reduce crime. It's a longer term. It's a more holistic look at it, but you can't over-police these situations into submission. We have to invest in our communities for long-term community safety. Um, I, I would encourage you, I don't want to take up a ton of time, um, but I have really detailed plans on all of these issues on my website on gun violence prevention, which is a serious issue and, and a very frustrating one because we can have all the gun control laws we want in New York City and they just keep coming in from out of state. Um, but you know, there are some things we can do here, so that's a really serious issue we should address. I have plans on my website. Plans for public safety. I encourage you to go sarahlinda NYC and look at my various plans, but certainly know that this is a serious issue to me as it is to all of us.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, just, we are paying attention to our chat. Um, messages that we're getting and there are two. One of them is commenting on the links of the responses. So I believe that's referring to the verbose nature. So we can sort of be aware of that. And also uh, the lack of specific ideas in the responses. So just throwing that out there, do with it as you will. And uh, I will turn it over to Steve for the next question.
Okay, so let's get, uh, let's get specific folks here because that is what we need to do, uh, do. I want to turn to sanitation. So uh, are sidewalks, people believe are increasingly littered with trash? And now we have to talk about another sort of squeamish issue. Quite frankly, I think we love dogs. I think that the increase of dogs is pretty clear. The pandemic has made the desire for fur to be close, we understand. But, but we do have a toilet training problem. Okay? And, and a lot of people are talking about this. So what should be done to keep our streets and the sidewalks cleaner? What specific ideas do you have about this issue, which is a community issue? Zach, you want to start? Are you there, Zach? Can you unmute and join us? Or have we lost you for a moment?
Hello, here I am.
Are you, you're good with that question? Did you, you hear me?
Can I get it one more time? I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of a connection issue here.
It's about the sanitation issues in our community and uh, included in that is the concern over the fact that uh, some of the dogs don't believe, I don't believe have been properly toilet trained uh, to conduct themselves in a sanitary method.
That's definitely been a uh, a big concern of mine. I mean, I do think I've seen an uptick in it. I'm always, I, I've gotten very good at dodging it myself, but I'm warning my friends, people who are not, you know, from around here. It's, it's a lot more of it is around. Um, I do think it's a big problem. They cut funding uh, for some of the sanitation stuff right at the start of the pandemic, and that was a big mistake, I think. I think that's something we'd like to cut last. Ed Koch had a great program, and I think we go a long way for this because one thing is the dog education should be good and maybe at dog runs, we could go and have some sort of seminar and talk to them. I think that'd be very helpful. And this is stuff I'm gonna be working on win or lose, so I'm glad we're talking about it, but, you know, of course, I'm gonna win, but either way. But the, the thing about it is Ed Koch had the 311 Task Force. And what they would do is they'd go around and they'd check with different 311s and each neighbor to make sure they're following up and keep it efficient. So I think a combination of getting some of that funding back up and then having a stricter uh, a stricter observance of the 311 service than making sure it's being delivered can keep the streets hopefully cleaner. I mean, we talked about at the beginning of this pedestrians, that's the lifeblood of this neighborhood. And that's why the reason this is Broadway. It's like the, the, the whole fun is walking around and going outside and getting what you want and having a good urban experience. And you can't really have that with uh, the dog issue. And we love our dogs. We're a big dog neighborhood. People should know to be able to, to handle it. So I think dog education, dog owner education, but also getting that funding back and then instituting the 311 Task Force. So when we, we see repeat offenders on 84th and Central Park, you know, call 311 and then I actually come and clean it up and, and keep an eye out.
Thank you, Zach. Uh, Sarah, let's just make sure we don't stick uh, only uh, to the issue of dogs because I think our litter issue transcends that particular concern, but includes it. Sarah?
Yeah, definitely. Well, I mean, Zach, Zach's right. The Department of Sanitation had its budget cut this year and I think the results are clearly visible on our streets. So we absolutely need to get that funding back to the Department of Sanitation. Um, and you know, I have proposals, I mentioned it earlier, for garbage corrals. So we don't have our garbage piled up in big garbage bags on the sidewalks, but rather they're put into, you know, hard-sided uh, containers. Because for one thing, when we, when every time we put our garbage out, especially with our organics, we're basically laying out a feast for the rats. They come every night, uh, so we're just feeding them with our garbage the way we do it right now. And it's also just, you know, the, the, the trash comes out of the bags once the rats open it up and then it's all over. And even when the um, you know, guys do come and take it, there's still a lot of litter on the ground. So I think that uh, you know, revising how we do our overnight trash would be, go really long way to solving this problem. As for the dog issue, um, certainly, education, I think, is really critical, reaching out to people. I, I love that idea, Zach, actually, of going to the dog parks with, you know, flyers and pamphlets, whatever, and educating people on what, how they should be uh, cleaning up after their dogs. Um, and I know there's various block associations that have put out signs, you know, about, I think, um, always using kind of that social shaming kind of language where it's like, good neighbors pick up after their dogs, rather than just curb your dog. Because some people don't even know what curb your dog means. Um, so you know, we can get creative with signage. Uh, and um, you know, maybe there's a, a way to get the Department of Sanitation involved in that issue as well. So um, definitely, definitely just funding the Department of Sanitation for sure.
Gail?
Um, well, a couple of, first of all, I have tried to be very specific. I just take a, I just want to make that clear in the entire program. But in terms of the sanitation department, just uh, last week, the mayor proposed, it hasn't happened yet, that using some of the federal money that he had cut uh, organics, litter baskets and some of the days of pickup. So with his two years, he's only got two years, and in his case, it's just got to the end of this year. But there's a two-year window and then, who knows? Uh, federal money to increase litter basket pickup and the organics. But on the Upper West Side, I think we need more than that, particularly because we have such pedestrian uh, opportunities. And so people are here all the time. And so the litter baskets by the end of the weekend are horrible, not to mention during the week. So we need extra litter basket pickup, not just the usual. And the second thing on the organics, it's, I was really angry, wrote a lot of letters when the program stopped because once people get out of the habit of uh, doing something on recycling, they, it takes a while to get back. So the organics program, because it is, uh, not only saves money for the city, you know, literally millions, but it makes the rats less interested. So the question would be, again, the block associations working where you exist and even where you don't, all together as a community, having the organics in a building that then goes to the black bin on the street and really working it. The schools did it for a while and then unfortunately, uh, not on the Upper West Side, but citywide, there were lots of uh, things put into the organics composting bin that were not allowed. And the people in New Jersey said, we're not doing this anymore because you are not doing it the right way. So that was the end of the school program. So as a community, we have to work with the schools, work with the institutions and work with the buildings to make sure the organics uh, program works. I will really work on the big bellies. The big bellies are expensive, but as I indicated, literally overnight, the rats were gone. And then finally, on the dogs, I mean, you can do education. I, then some of those owners are terrific. I love dogs too. I think the people in the dog runs are probably the ones that do pick up. But I see people on my block just leaving, uh, not picking up. And I think we have to work with the vets. You gotta work with uh, any place, AC, ACC, any place where there's a shelter, where there are people who are loving their dogs but not doing the right thing. So it's a major education program. And you know, they're really, they're challenging, to put it mildly. Cameras if you want, Jamie?
Thanks, Gail. Thanks, Gail. Maria?
Yeah, um, so I met with a couple of uh, community members who are running um, sanitation help programs like One Block and um, really drilled down on how to make the streets cleaner. Uh, and the execution of uh, sanitation programs are much more complicated than just upfunding the Department of Sanitation. So they had a hundred million dollar budget cut, which caused a, a decrease in the amount of um, uh, emptying of our garbage pails that we've had. But a lot has to do with the scheduling of when pickups happen. And so if, if small businesses are putting out their garbage bags at a time when the uh, trucks aren't coming, they could sit out on the street for long periods of time. At the same time, we've got certain areas of the neighborhood that don't have bids. When the bids are involved, there's extra funding for sanitation. If the bid is not involved, extra sanitation is needed. So what I'm advocating for is more funding for smaller community-based groups who work to have a very focused approach to cleaning up specific garbage areas that have the highest amount of garbage. Um, that is what community members who are involved in keeping our neighborhoods clean outside the bid are telling me what is the most effective way to move forward. So, you know, yes, if we can afford it, let's get more sanitation. But as we go through, you know, post-pandemic and recovery, we may not be able to afford everything we want. And I would love to see uh, when I'm elected, I will use my discretionary budget to supplement uh, sanitation in the area and will support community-based efforts to improve sanitation. In terms of the uh, dog uh, situation, my dog, uh, uh, you know, I'm a dog owner and uh, I have many, many, many friends who are dog owners and we are all concerned about this. How about we uh, start putting those advertisements up and down Broadway on those big billboards about this? I'd love to see an outward campaign to get the word out, we're a community and guys, you really have to clean up after your dog. Um, it's not fair to the dogs who have to walk through it. It's not fair to the, the families. Um, so you know, that's just an idea I'm throwing out. I'm sure there are other ways to, to, to get the message out broadly as a community. You know, we can have a, a, you know, clean up after your dog, um, you know, uh, you know, you know, posters that children can do. We can put that in the public schools. Have a, uh, have a poster contest. Can you come up with a creative way to get the message out? We can blast it via, you know, social media, make this, you know, a community-wide effort to just put an end to this. Um, you know, recurrent problem. And I have to say, I do hear this about the uh, the dogs uh, um, uh, quite, quite regularly in the neighborhood, especially.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Maria. Jeffrey?
This is, this is a huge issue in the neighborhood. Um, as, as others have said, when the sanitation budget was, was cut last summer, uh, garbage started piling up on the street in a way that we're just not used to. It's why I've been volunteering with an organization called One Block Upper West Side that spends the weekends picking up garbage in the neighborhood. It's an incredible organization. And if you're looking for a way to get involved in the community, talk about civic engagement, there is nothing more cathartic than going out onto your street and picking up garbage with uh, not your own hands, but with a, a, one of those picker-uppers. Uh, so yes, as others have said, we've got to restore the sanitation budget. Uh, but I think we need to reform the system. The commercial sanitation system was actually reformed in the last couple of years. And I think the, the report on just on the results of that reform were delayed because of the pandemic, but I'm really interested to see how it's turned out. It, it seems like a great program to me, uh, leaving bags on streets for less time and fewer trucks uh, driving in our neighborhoods. So less garbage and less pollution. Uh, if it's succeeding in the way that I'm hoping it is, uh, we now need to focus on residential garbage, which is a completely different system than, than the commercial sanitation system. You know, what's funny about this question is I was literally just before this meeting, talking to a voter, a, a resident, uh, who said, look, I, I like your arts platform, but what are you gonna do about the dog poop in the neighborhood? Uh, I, I told her, you know, we've got more dogs and more dog owners in this neighborhood than we've ever had. I wish I had gotten a dog a year ago and I'm available for dog sitting opportunities if anybody's interested. Um, but we just need more education. We need signs in the neighborhood. Penalties for not picking up after your dog need to be listed on those signs. And then those penalties need to be enforced. Uh, I think, I think it's really that simple. Um, I have heard of some block associations elsewhere in the country doing a DNA analysis of dog poop to find out which dog it was, creating a registry so that you know every dog's DNA on the block and you can find out who the, the guilty party was. But I will leave that up to you.
Thank you so much, Jeffrey. I don't have, have the words to thank you with that suggestion. But it's uh, it's one that we'll take to heart and uh, and consider, Andy.
It's now 7:10, so I think we're probably gonna have time for one more round of questions. And this topic is a loaded one. It is something that is on the minds of governments uh, from every country across the globe. So it is the topic of environment. And what do you think are the biggest environmental issues here on the Upper West Side? And what could be done on a local level to help address this major global issue? And we're gonna start with Sarah.
Great. You didn't give me any time to prepare. Um, no, this is a, a, a great question as well. Um, climate change and sustainability and resilience is one of my top priorities. And I think, you know, I have two young children. I want to leave a, a safe and habitable world for the next generation. So I think we, we certainly have an obligation to take this on. On the local level, um, you know, there are two things, I think, in Manhattan and then in the neighborhood that we really feel. One is uh, the air pollution and then one is extreme heat. And we know, especially among seniors and others without um, you know, access to air conditioning, the extreme heat in the summers can be really damaging. So increasing access to cooling centers um, is really important. Obviously, that was difficult during COVID, but going forward, I think we can get back to that model. Uh, and then in terms of the air pollution, we know that the, the main sources of uh, particulate matter in the air are vehicles and buildings and particularly heating oils. Um, so the city has been working on the heating oil issue and I think there's continuing to be legislation and city council to work on that. And I would very much support that. I also support retrofitting our buildings to make them more energy efficient. Um, but you know, that takes time and there's, there's a lot of complication in that. I think on the local level and the very immediate impact is doing everything we can to, to um, lower vehicle emissions in the neighborhood. Idling trucks is a really big source of it and something we must address. And that's why I mentioned earlier, the idea of loading zones where trucks can actually park, turn off. and unload. I've also proposed, you know, a slight rezoning of some of the commercial space in the neighborhood, which could include the ability to have mini distribution centers. So instead of having trucks double parked and idling, they can unload into a distribution center and then deliver from there. So those are some ideas on that. And then this is the other reason why I'm, I'm very supportive of bike lanes, micro mobility and especially bus lanes. You know, the city council doesn't have a lot of say over the subway. There's many things that needs to be fixed about it, including the accessibility of it. And for many people in our neighborhood with mobility issues, the fact that many of our subway stations aren't accessible is a big problem. But the city council does have a lot of say over the buses. I have a lot of proposals about buses. I'd love to see dedicated bus lanes in the district. Buses are much more easily accessible for those with mobility issues. There, we can make them energy efficient. We can get people out of private vehicles onto buses, zooming around the neighborhood. I'm very excited about the potential and I think it's something we can do quickly and relatively easily as compared to some of the other issues. So that would be a top priority of mine.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to Jeffrey.
I think the number one issue affecting the environment and climate issues in general is resilience. Resiliency, making sure that we are prepared for climate change. We saw just a taste of what's in store for us over the next century with Superstorm Sandy. And we're not ready for the next one. It's going to be expensive, so we're going to need a lot of help from the federal government. We have got to make sure that the kinds of, the kind of flooding that we experienced in 2012 doesn't happen again. Here in, in this district, this, just the southern part of the district, the West 50s is the, I think that's the lowest lying land of the district that's most exposed. And I, I think it did experience some flooding in, in 2012. So we've got to make sure that we are included in all the resiliency plans as we, as we protect Lower Manhattan. So that's, that's the first thing. We've got to make sure that all of the buildings that are built use green construction technology to make sure that they are, they have zero carbon emissions. And I think we can use the Euler process to, to have those discussions early on to make sure that that's, to make sure that the developers know that that's our expectation. And that's how they're going to get developments approved in, in our district. I'm a big fan of the congestion pricing program and I'm looking forward to implementing that. But we've got to make sure that it's working for our neighborhood. I'm concerned that the Upper West Side could become a parking lot since the congestion pricing cutoff is at 60th Street. And so there may be a lot of people commuting into the city and, and using Upper West Side as, as a parking lot. I, that's why we need a residential permit parking system to prioritize parking for residents. And anybody else who's coming in is going to have to pay a lot more money. Those, oh, and we've got, we need, as Sarah was saying, we need to get car pollution off the streets. The one thing that the city controls is a huge fleet of vehicles. They've all got to be electric. And our buses, as they're, as they're going around the city, we can cut down on emissions there by implementing transit signal priority at all of our intersections. And it's the software that tells the, the lights at the intersection that a bus is coming and then magically they turn green and no more idling at the intersection. And so we can solve a lot of these problems with technology.
Thank you. Gail?
Um, well, first of all, I want to second this air pollution because the West Side is very high on air pollution in terms of the toxic. So is the idling is probably the gazillion Amazon deliveries, UPS, et cetera, that we have maybe more than any other neighborhood. So that does have to be addressed and that's an idling issue. But I want to say in terms of your role as block association, there is a new city council law, it's no joke, that within a certain sized building, without getting into all the specifics, has to meet certain energy efficiencies by a certain date. And guess what? It's being fought, you know, I understand. And so you need to work if it's going to be the law and is going to happen. I remember when we went under Bloomberg from six oil to four, two electric, gas, et cetera. I went to almost every building on the Upper West Side saying, you've got to move this. This is not a joke. So what I'm saying is the buildings are the number one contributor to carbon in our city. And so these buildings on the Upper West Side are very high on that list because they're large. So number one would be making sure that the buildings and the institutions, because there are a lot of institutions also that do not want to conform because understandably it's expensive. So that's number one. The second issue is, there's also the issue of home health. That's what I call it, mold. Because that is what produces the asthma, which means children don't go to school and of course, all the other challenges health-wise. So we got to work on that. It's not just the NHTA. There are other buildings also that are not healthy. And we have to work to make sure that the building's apartment or in case of NHTA is addressing that. I'm also, I've given millions of dollars over the years for the parks. I am a huge supporter, as I think we all are. But guess what? They're packed. And I got to complain today that there were challenges with some of our parks because there's so many people using them and they're not being taken care of. It's a lot. It needs funding. It needs support. It needs capital. Our soldiers and sailors monument needs 30 million, just to give an example. So all the parks, all the street trees, I've seen street trees die all over the place. We've got to get them. They take care of us, those trees. They're for us. They're not just for the beauty. And they have to be replaced. And I see vacant, despite some new ones, I see a whole lot of vacant tree picks. And then finally, I just, I also want to second this issue with the congestion pricing. It is going to hit our neighborhood harder than ever and I supported it. I voted for it. But we have to be, you know, pre-planning in terms of the environmental issues. I've also been endorsed by the New York League of Conservation Voters. And I think one of the reasons is I supported a bill, passed a bill that says during the summer, if you've got an air conditioning in your store, please close the door because you're not helping the environment. So, you know, even that requires the local community in a nice positive way to state it is the law. You need to close the door. And that's small, but it makes a big difference in terms of our, our city and the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Zach?
Um, this is a really important question. Like you said, I definitely have a different line of thinking on this. In terms of what we can do locally, cutting emissions, some of these huge challenges, that's something that's going to be tackled at really high levels throughout our country. Stuff that our neighborhood needs to accomplish, I believe, is, is localizing supply chains. Over COVID, there's a real concern of food shortages, medicine shortages, things like that. That stuff can be addressed at a local level and Upper West Side can do a really good job of drawing in some of the startups that are working on this because it's like an unbelievably good case study. It's the center of the world. It's Upper West Side of Manhattan. If we can be self-sufficient here, then you know, we could pull it off anywhere. There, there are machines now that can produce pharmacological, like, you know, psychiatric medication, stuff for diabetes, things like that locally. There's different, there are different machines now that can help produce food and, and, and much, much more economical farming locally. We need to have a system and start setting that up and investing in that now that can supply us for the inevitable storms that'll happen and the inevitable disasters that have the fall on humanity forever. Because we have such an interconnected system, we saw what can happen when the system shuts down even a little. We don't want to be left hanging. We don't want to be in a situation where fortunately, Upper West Side, we're a higher ground. We can avoid a lot of the flooding. Sandy was horrible, but the neighborhood, largely Upper West Side, a lot of the neighborhood was, was relatively safe from, on the high ground. What we're not safe from is being isolated from the supply chain. Not having access to, you know, there's a large senior citizen population here, not having access to medicine and the food they need. That's the biggest environmental threat and that's a consequence of what's inevitably going to happen. And that's not part of the conversation at all of how we're going to address that in New York City or in this neighborhood. And I think it, it's, it's what's going to be ultimately what's most pertinent. And it's, the, the future really is local in so many respects. And I think that's what's so exciting about this association and, and why I'm running. And then in terms of doing this kind of thing and localizing food distribution and medicine distribution, it's inevitable. We're not going to be able to sustain these vast interconnected, where you're getting your strawberries from India or whatever every time you want. It's just not, it's, it's, it's besides emissions, it's too, it's too risky. You can't, you can't count on it. You need to have infrastructure where you could supply yourselves for an extended period of time in a point of crisis. And in the Broadway, Upper West Side, we could do, we could do a good job of attracting people that want to experiment. They're doing it in more rural parts of the country and say, hey, come to the Upper West Side, showcase what you're doing in terms of self-sufficiency and help us get prepared and then get attention for what you're doing. It sounds like paying them with exposure, but drawing them in with exposure and, and, and make, make us a case study because that's what's really going to be important. A lot of the ideas that are being said are really good. What are, what are going to help people survive and thrive even during a horrible crisis? Is having access to food and medicine reliably for months on end despite a storm.
Thank you, Zach. And we'll finish this question up with Maria.
So a really important question and certainly resiliency against climate change in New York City, which is, you know, basically on the Atlantic Ocean, the Bay, the Hudson River, Jamaica Bay. I went through Hurricane Sandy with members of my family and two years previously, Hurricane Irene, which was also a very serious storm that caused tremendous damage. I have many friends in, in Queens and Brooklyn that were near waterfront properties and were seriously hurt in, in Hurricane Sandy. And I worked with them for many months on recovery efforts to, you know, help them. I negotiate with insurance companies to get coverage. It was really, really a very, very traumatic time. I helped people secure alternative housing when they lost housing. I did a lot of volunteer legal work. I worked with community groups on the Upper West Side to bring clothing and food and other supplies to people in far reaches of, 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 of New York area after Sandy. So this is something that is very close to me and very serious. I think that here we are on the Upper West Side on high ground. You know, I remember going to, you know, sleep the night of Hurricane Sandy and feeling quite safe here, but knowing that many of my friends in Brooklyn and elsewhere who were close to the water really were, 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 you know, calling me and worried about where they were going to be sleeping the next day. So this is something that's really serious and we have to take very seriously. I don't think we're doing enough here in New York City to secure a resiliency. I know that there have been efforts downtown to do that. I know they've been very controversial. South Street Seaport and other areas. And we really need to amp that up. To me, I bring this down to local issues. We really need to secure our community against the devastating effects of climate change that will happen again. They say it's a hundred year storm. No one believes that. We think that this is going to happen again and we need to be ready for it. We need to be ready with food. We need to be ready with water. We need to be ready with safety and protocols for how we evacuate. I know that there's a real concern about how the water supply will be affected if we have another storm. So we have to be worrying about water supplies as well. In terms of our city streets and electric cars, buses, et cetera, I think that's something we need to move toward as well. I think we need charging stations and, and help for people to transition to electric cars. I think that would be a great thing. I also think we need to improve our green spaces, have more open spaces, more places that can be resilient to storm. I think, you know, uh, uh, we don't want to overtax our infrastructure in a very delicate environment with a lot of fragility in our environment. And then finally, I want to say I support all efforts for green jobs. I know that along the Brooklyn waterfront, where in the Williamsburg area and in Red Hook, where friends of mine lived and suffered during Hurricane Sandy, they have built a number of wind, wind and solar facilities that I think are really good. Love to see more of that in the New York area.
Thank you. Thank you, Maria. So, um, just so that we are clear, among the other issues that we did not dig into so far and did not have the time for, but that are of key interest in this community from what has been shared with us. Issues concerning land use, issues concerning education throughout our district, the issue of specifics on dealing with empty stores, concern for the way seniors are treated and supported in our community. And of course, the issue of parking and congestion pricing impact. So we did not have time for that, but these are the issues that will be discussed leading up to the election and hopefully you will be talking with them in different forums. It unfortunately means we have to go to the wrap-up where everyone has a minute. I don't want to, I don't want to hit the gong after a minute, so I ask you to please be, be respectful of that. But if we can, Zach, if you could kick us off with your one-minute closing, please.
Absolutely. It's been such an honor to be in this race and to be invited to speak here. This is exactly the kind of thing that I've been interested in from the beginning is, is people around the neighborhood, citizens, local neighbors, taking actions, making a material difference in the environment, in their lives. And that's what my campaign's all about. That's why we're opening the store this weekend, our first attempt at this startup retail initiative, which I, I really am optimistic will do a lot for the neighborhood and with your help, be a big success. It's May 21st through May 23rd. We're going to have live reggae. We're going to have DJs, DJ reggae. We might have a pony. We're going to have about some violinists at one point, my judge, from the Juilliard pre-college. And we're selling great shirts. The Bocho means I am loving Nigerian. It's a great shirt, great brand. And it's exactly the kind of thing our campaign's about. We're all volunteer. We're just trying to get stuff done. After this, we have some more events lined up in different parts of the neighborhood. And I look forward to speaking to all of you who so graciously hosted me about things that maybe we could work together on. That's what we like to do. We want to do direct action. We don't wait to get, I don't want to wait to get elected to get things done. But if I'm elected, and I hope I'll be elected, I can get much more done. So, so thank you very much for having me and I, I look forward to speaking soon.
Thanks very much, Zach. Jeffrey?
First off, thank you so much for having us and for, for asking so many thoughtful questions. I wish we had more time. I'm Jeffrey Omura. I'm an artist, an activist and a labor leader, an elected officer. My union Actors Equity Association, representing more than 20,000 stage managers and actors right here in New York City. This pandemic wiped us out. Everyone I know has been unemployed for the past year. And I'm running for city council to get us all back to work. We've got more than 100,000 arts workers who have been unemployed for the past year. And we've got 65 million tourists who are waiting to come back to our city and support our hotels and our restaurants and our retail. And we get them back by prioritizing the revitalization of arts and culture. And that's something that people on the Upper West Side know a lot about. We've got more artists living up here than any other neighborhood. We've got more arts patrons too. And so I'm so excited to, to represent you. I'm so excited to have your vote because together I know that we'll create a renaissance for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Sarah?
Great. Thank you so much for having me and sharing this conversation tonight. My name is Sarah Lind. I'm a lawyer, an activist and a mom. I have experience navigating the sharp edges of corporate America, the bureaucracy of government and the shoestring budgets of the nonprofit world. And I've been working on the ground in this community as a member of Community Board Seven, the school leadership team at PS 166, where my son goes to school. I've served on the citywide participatory budgeting committee, on county committee and much more. I believe that we can end homelessness. We can create a thriving arts district on the Upper West Side. We can fill our storefronts. We can provide an excellent education for all of our children. And we can create a Green New Deal to prepare the city for the climate change and give the next generation a fighting chance. We just need leaders with a conviction to act and I am ready to take action on day one. I would love to earn your number one vote on June 22nd and thank you again for having me. Thanks.
Thanks, Sarah. Maria?
Thank you again to the Upper West Side Coalition Block Association and I'm so excited for the work you're going to be doing. My name is Maria D'Antolo. I really hope that this evening we were able to answer the important questions and of course, reach out to me at any time if you have additional questions. I'm a 40-year resident of the Upper West Side, a mother of three. I have very deep legal and business experience. I worked for my entire career in the private sector, fighting for the rights of artists, creators, authors and others. I also took on big tech in my career, ran a multimillion-dollar enforcement program, working on very detailed budgets in the multimillion-dollar range. I'm a member of the New York Bar, the US Supreme Court Bar, the Federal Bar. And I have a tremendous commitment to this neighborhood. I'm, what comes first for me is the community. I am here to represent the community. I don't, I'm not a career politician. I'm an outsider, but I think that's a positive. I think we need change. I think we need to go forward in a positive way with new leadership that is going to bring a fresh vision to the Upper West Side that is not going to be beholden to special interest groups, that is not going to be concerned about meeting promises that were made to people prior to getting elected. I'm supported by the community. I have the most community support of any candidate in the race. And my goal here is to represent the community. I hear you, Upper West Side. I will always continue to hear the community. That's my number one priority. So vote for me number one on June 22nd, starting June 12th for early voting. Thanks.
Thank you, Maria. Gail?
Well, thank you very much. I am very excited about the coalition of black associations. As you know, I am, been in borough president for eight years. I was in the city council for 12 years. And I've, in the past, built affordable housing. I've also been teaching at Hunter and other CUNY campuses and Barnard for many years. And I have also been the head of the federal office for Mayor Dinkins. I was on the community board years ago. Just like everyone on this. I was on the community board years ago. Just like everyone on this panel, I love the Upper West Side. I think that my experience will be helpful for the next four years. There will be many new members of the City Council. There'll be a new mayor, a new comptroller. And I think that there will be lots of great ideas. I think I've tried to be specific about some of them, and there are others that have come up from the panel, but you have to implement them, and my experience will help to do that. We're going to have some very large land use challenges that are coming to the Upper West Side. But I've got almost 200 ULRs that I've worked on in terms of the rezonings in addition. And I think that with my experience, we can have a neighborhood that is moving forward with good ideas that get implemented. You've got to have something of a city-wide basis to work with people in order to get those ideas implemented. And that's why I think I have about 50 organizations that have endorsed me, many local leaders. And I'm looking forward to making a difference in a very complicated post-pandemic world where every single issue is on the table. We have to make sure that everybody is part of the solution and nobody gets left out. Thank you very, very much, and congratulations on coming together.
Thank you so much, Gail. On behalf of Chris, Dee, and myself, thank you to all the candidates and all of our neighbors at home for joining us for our first event. And let the work continue, and we wish you all the best of luck. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
This will also be taped, and it will be posted on our website, theupperwestsidecoalition.org. And next week, we'll be joined for a forum with all of the candidates for Manhattan Borough President who are running in the June 22nd Democratic primary. So we hope you will join us again for that event. So please be in contact with us at upperwestsidecoalition@gmail.com. And if you're interested in joining the coalition or wanting to learn more about block associations in your neighborhood or thinking about starting your own block association, well, we want to hear from you. And thank you again for joining us tonight. And thank you, candidates.
Thank you.